Good evening and welcome to the September 25, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in due diligence, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lee? Jones? Egan? Poota? Childress? Henke? Pagano? Here. Parson? Siam?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of September 19? Hold on just a minute and I'll get you. Mr. Parson?
Yes, Madam President, I just have one correction on the council minutes, line number 182. Just the spelling of that organization, the Kwesi Prince Foundation, it's actually K-W-E-S-I. Just want to make sure I correct that in case somebody wants to look it up and find out about it. Thank you.
Councilman Parson moves to amend the minutes, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
So Councilman Parson moves to approve the amended minutes, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Dr. Rance Thomas, presented by Mayor Schneider.
Whereas the North County Churches uniting for racial harmony and justice in initiative of people of faith as well as non-church members who envision North County as a vibrant, diverse area where residents and schools and businesses can flourish in an environment of dignity, justice, and racial harmony. Whereas Rance Thomas is the co-founder and the president of the North County Churches United Organized in 1998 when 19 churches came together with John Knox Presbyterian Church and now presently consists of 25 churches of various denominations, including seven Catholic and several non-denominational churches in Florissant, Ferguson, Unincorporated North County, Blackjack, Bell Fountain, and other municipalities. Whereas NCCU has coordinated various activities with other organizations including St. Louis Community College in Florissant Valley, University of Missouri-St. Louis, North County Incorporated, People's Health, County Health Department, Christian Hospital, SSM DePaul Hospital, Hazelwood, Ferguson, Florissant School Districts, and elected officials to provide information and support for all within the North St. Louis County. And whereas NCCU has worked diligently to create a community of racial harmony and justice by providing activities that bring people of different races together to share common experiences. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant, Missouri, do hereby wish to recognize North County Churches uniting for racial harmony and justice and the president of Dr. Rance Thomas for their continuous support and dedication to North County.
Rance has been a part of our Florissant area community for many, many years and has been a conduit for understanding and for goodwill between the different stakeholders of this community. I just want to commend him for all the work that he's done with our police department, with the clergy of the community, and try to foster good relationships between all of us. One thing that Florissant has is a population of people that like each other, like to spend time with each other, and it's people like Rance that help to continue that tradition. Rance?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I do have a few words to say, but may I read my notes here? Before I begin, I'd like to recognize a couple of our board members who were here this evening. Reverend John Higgins, our chaplain, Dr. Barbara Thompson, our vice president. We're glad to have you with us. It is indeed an honor to receive this proclamation from you recognizing the work of North County Churches, racial harmony and justice in North County. We are very grateful for your support, support of the council and the Florissant Police Department. We've been a truly wonderful working relationship. I'd like to share one other thing with you. I shared the police departments and North County Churches, racial harmony and justice Sonless Joy Program with the President's Roundtable at Louisville Seminary in Louisville, Kentucky, a few weeks ago. This is the program where some of our churches donate funds to give them to the police department to pass out gift certificates to individuals at Christmas. The roundtable consists of pastors, leaders from across the country, all the way from New York to California, all in between. Our Sonless Joy Program receives a great deal of favoritism and favorable comments. In fact, one member told me that he shared the information with his mayor in his hometown in Alabama and encouraged him to implement a similar program in that city. This is very encouraging. Very proud to know that other people are working to improve relations with the police in the community. Once again, I'm here for North County Churches, racial harmony and justice. I'm very grateful and honored to receive this proclamation. We look forward to continuing our work together to make North County a place where individuals want to live, work, and raise their families. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda are police commendations, presented by Police Chief Tim Lowry and Mayor Schneider.
Thank you very much. First, I just want to congratulate Dr. Thomas and NCCU for the award this evening, and I really appreciate the partnerships that we've had and really do appreciate the help that you've given us throughout the years. Thank you. And then I want to thank the mayor, the city council, for allowing us to be here today to recognize these officers and employees of the Florissant Police Department for their hard work and dedication and some outstanding things that you're going to hear that these officers have done during their tours of duty, and I really appreciate what they do and actually all of the police officers and employees of the Florissant Police Department. In addition, we're going to also honor a resident who came to the aid of one of our officers during an arrest situation where that officer was in a struggle, and without this person's assistance, our officer certainly could have been hurt. So we want to honor him today also. And I also want to thank, there's a lot of family members here of these officers and employees, and I want to thank them for being here tonight. It means a lot to these guys that they have the support. And the other thing you're going to see tonight, too, is that we're pretty tough on our employees. We've got one that's on a cane, and then we've got another one that's on crutches, so.
We are very blessed. I think we have one of the best police departments in the entire nation, and I'd like for you to give them a round of applause. I'm so blessed to have such a dedicated, lifelong dedicated police chief to this community, and he has surrounded himself with a command staff that has been our pleasure to promote, just about each and every one of them, all the way down to the sergeants. We have a department that is very efficient, very professional, and very dedicated, and Chief, I just want to tell you how much of an honor it is to be affiliated with you and your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Ready? First commendation is for Detective Tim Green. On April 19, 2017, two elderly females were victims of a robbery and an attempted robbery. The suspect's intent was to forcibly steal and pursue the purse of each victim. In one of the two incidents, this suspect, I don't have to read today, was seen touching the vehicle. Detective Green was called to the scene where he proceeded that he processed the vehicle and obtained fingerprints which were identified by the St. Louis County Crime Lab as those of a suspect who was currently on parole for robbing another elderly female victim. The violent offender was also implicated in a robbery of an elderly female in Granite City, Illinois. The suspect was arrested and charged with both Missouri and Illinois with robbery. Due to Detective Green's professional and determined performance of duty, a dangerous, persistent offender has been removed from the streets of Missouri and Illinois. He is hereby officially commended. Next commendation is for Detective Chris Easton, Detective Nick Osmar, Detective Josh Smith, Detective Brian Bussin, and Detective Dewitt Edwards. On May 16, 2017, the Florissant Police Department initiated an investigation in a suspect drug dealer. During the investigation, the dealer was observed conducting open-air narcotic sales. Upon contacting the suspect and other persons present, they were able to locate a half pound of methamphetamine and large quantity of U.S. currency. As their investigation continued, they were able to identify other mid-level dealers, conduct consent search, seize two more ounces of methamphetamine, and obtain a written confession implicating the original dealer as the supplier. As the detective worked with St. Charles County Regional Drug Task Force, they were able to secure a search warrant on August 3, 2017, and secure the residence of the supplier. And search, the residence of the supplier. The search resulted in the seizure of a half a pound of methamphetamine and approximately $60,000. A controlled delivery was also set up on August 4, 2017 with a Kansas City, Missouri supplier, and another five kilograms of methamphetamine was seized. Their diligent investigative techniques and excellent police work has removed several dangerous drug dealers from the streets of Florissant, St. Charles, and Kansas City. For their excellent work, they are hereby officially commended. The next commendation is for Officer Pat O'Fallon and K-9 Arish. On June 19, 2017, officers responded to a call of disturbance in a 2,300 block of Montezuma. Arriving officers were informed that a subject had sliced his wrists with a knife. They had found a large amount of blood at the scene, but were unable to locate the subject. Officer O'Fallon and his K-9 partner, Arish, who were off-duty at the time, were called to the scene. Arish was able to track the subject into a wooded area, and officers at the scene were able to provide first aid until paramedics arrived. The quick response and outstanding tracking by Officer O'Fallon and his K-9 partner, Arish, undoubtedly saved a life. For Officer O'Fallon and Arish's excellent police work and outstanding service, they are officially commended. Officer Richard Conan and Officer Kayla Fels. Between May 24, 2017, and June 8, 2017, Officer Fels and Officer Conan investigated several felonies at a residence and businesses in the city of Florissant. The officers identified several juvenile suspects that were able to, and were able to take them into custody for various crimes. Officer Fels and Officer Conan conducted follow-up interviews with all of the parents of the juveniles and issued citations to the parents for parental neglect. In spite of the hostile behavior by the suspects, both officers conducted themselves with professional demeanor. Their diligent police work and excellent handling of juveniles committed criminal acts in the city of Florissant, and they are hereby commended. Officer Moben Malik, Detective Joshua Smith, Sergeant Tony Moka. On June 2, 2017, Officer Smith, Officer Malik responded to a call of parental kidnapping. The father was in town from California and had refused to return the daughter to the mother who had legally custody. Their investigation led to a discovery that the father had removed the child to another state. After they presented the facts to St. Louis County Prosecuting Attorney, an at-large warrant was issued for the arrest of the father. With the assistance of Sergeant Moka, the father's child, the father and child's location was discovered, and after working with the Los Angeles Police Department, a search warrant was issued in California. Upon the execution of the search warrant, the father was arrested and the child was returned to her mother. Due to their excellent handling of this case and skillful follow-up investigation, a 13-year-old girl was rescued from a dangerous situation and returned home. For their excellent police work and outstanding handling of the case, they are officially commended. Officer Benjamin Bathon. On June 29, 2017, Officer Bathon conducted a traffic stop in the 3,500 block of Parker Road. As a result of the stop, Officer Bathon was able to seize four firearms and a felony quantity of narcotics. His investigation revealed that one of the firearms was stolen from a burglary in St. Louis County. Four occupants of the vehicles were arrested, two of which were convicted felons, and one was currently on probation and parole for narcotics violations. During the follow-up investigation, approximately 50 pounds of marijuana was seized. Due to Officer Bathon's excellent patrol techniques and follow-up investigation, he has removed a dangerous felon from the streets of the city of Florissant. Officer Bathon is hereby commended. Officer Alex Keim. On July 20, 2017, Officer Keim conducted a routine traffic stop for an expired license plate. When he discovered the driver was a convicted felon currently on probation for unlawful use of a firearm and wanted by several police agencies for traffic warrants, he gained consent to search his vehicle. The search resulted in the location of a stolen 9-millimeter gun, followed by the arrest of the driver. Officer Keim was able to secure a complete confession. Due to his excellent patrol techniques and follow-up investigation, Officer Keim was roomed, was removed, has removed, a dangerous felon from the streets of the city of Florissant. He is hereby officially commended. Detective Dustin Edwards. On August 14, 2017, Detective Edwards was advised that a black vehicle had been involved in an accident where the occupants fired several shots at another vehicle with an assault rifle. While patrolling and observed, he observed a similar vehicle. He followed the vehicle, as he followed the vehicle, other officers converged on his location. Under the, upon their arrival, he conducted a felony vehicle stop and located the assault rifle in the front seat. The three occupants were taken to custody and charged with assault one degree and armed criminal action. Due to Detective Edwards' excellent patrol techniques and self-initiated police work, he has removed three dangerous felons from the streets of Florissant. He is hereby commended. Officer Pat O'Neill. On August 15, 2017, Officer O'Neill received a call to the North County Christian School regarding the theft of credit cards. As he investigated the crime, he discovered that the credit cards had been taken in a burglary and that they had been used at several locations. Officer O'Neill's follow-up investigation resulted in him positively identifying the suspect and securing the video recordings of the suspect making transactions. Due to his extra effort, a suspect has been identified and currently being sought by our department. For his diligent police work and extra effort in this case, he is hereby commended. Detective Joe Monahan, Detective Brian Bussin, and Dispatcher Matt Young. On August 27, 2017, officers responded to a robbery in the 200 block of U.S. Highway 67, where an elderly victim was assaulted and her purse was brutally taken. As Detective Bussin and Detective Monahan realized that this was very similar to another robbery on August 18, they recalled that there was a license plate in the original call notes taken by the dispatcher, Young. Utilizing that license and registration information, they were able to quickly arrest the suspects. Due to the detective's excellent investigative skills, Dispatcher Young's proficiency, dangerous felons who were preying on the elderly have been removed from the streets of Florissant. They are hereby officially commended. The next one is a certificate of appreciation for Greg Williams. On July 18, 2017, Officer Lively was attempting to make a felony arrest in the 500 block of Patterson. The suspect began to resist while fighting with the officer, Lively. He attempted to get the officer's weapon from his holster. Without thinking of his personal safety, Mr. Williams physically engaged himself in the struggle to restrain the suspect. Because of his assistance, the suspect was restrained until other officers arrived and he was taken into custody without the officer sustaining any injury. Because of Mr. Williams' bravery and courageous actions, the Florissant Police Department would like to formally commend him and thank him for his selfless acts of heroism.
Thank you all. They all want their daddies.
Yeah, they're happy now.
They should have just let them run up to their daddy. I would like to amend the agenda at this point to allow the mayor to present his budget message, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm just going to pass these down.
Why don't you give me a new start?
Well, you can get half of them.
I can do both.
You got five?
I can do both. How many is it?
Do I get one?
And then that one's mine? Okay, okay.
I'll get mine.
All right.
I have five pages to this budget message, and when I mentioned that to the council president, she asked me if I could abbreviate it. So I'll just mention a few things in here, you know. First paragraph, "As mayor of the city of Florissant, it's my responsibility to submit a proposed budget for the upcoming 2018 fiscal year. The proposed budget of just over $40 million is submitted in compliance with Section 6.6 of the city charter and Section 67.101 of the Missouri revised statutes. The 2018 proposed budget provides a complete financial plan for the general capital improvement park, improvement street, sewer lateral property revitalization, and court building funds." Another paragraph, "A healthy reserve is crucial to maintaining a consistent level of service and programs over time. Reserves provide the cushion necessary to bridge the ebbs and flows in the city's revenue streams from one year to the next. The general fund is projected to have a reserve balance of $8.2 million going into the 2018 fiscal year. The proposed budget requires the use of $1.8 million from general fund reserves. This includes a one-time net expenditure of $200,000 to rebuild and reconfigure the Public Works database. It is projected that the general fund will still have a reserve balance of just over $6.4 million, which is 24% of the proposed budget and above our policy of target and reserve balance of at least 10%. Based on past experiences, anticipated that a majority of this deficit will be returned, and therefore this amount is sustainable. The use of reserve funds is necessary and prudent use of resources. The proposed budget is a balanced budget." Another sentence, "100% of the proposition P-money will go to our police department." And then finally, I just want to thank Chief Lowry and his command staff, Public Works Director Lou Jules and his staff, Parks Director Todd Schmidt and his staff, and all the department heads for their diligent and hard work in assisting the administration in the preparation of the proposed budget. I also wish to express my appreciation for the suggestions and encouragement of the members of the city council. I commend all of the employees of the city of Florissant for their hard work and dedication to the residents of our city. This budget has been prepared to be sustainable and to continue to provide the level of services that the residents of Florissant have come to expect. I look forward to discussing the proposed budget with the Florissant City Council and to continue working together for the progress of our beautiful city. Thank you."
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening, for three minutes. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer period, but we would be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Just want to add also that the entire budget and message will be on our website tomorrow.
No. Do you have a card?
Oh, do you want to read those first?
Well, I had one before you, but you know, if you want, you're up here, Mr. Bellman. But, okay. Go ahead and then fill out the card. How's that? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Bellman. I'm a resident of the city of Florissant, 740 Lindsey Lane. I am a 40-year veteran of the carpenter's trade, still am, 30-year construction supervisor, 22 years of my own private business, which we did residential and like construction, like commercial construction. For the last five years, I have been working as a private construction consultant. Also in my career, I have 18 years, on the Hazelwood, over 18 years, on the Hazelwood Board of Education, which has handled over $210 million of construction that I was partly overseeing. Never once in all of my time dealing with owners, customers, housewives, husbands, in my entire career have I ever experienced what I witnessed last Wednesday night in this council chambers. You have an employee who is a construction management company who acted, in my opinion, arrogant to each and every one of you, especially you, Mrs. Pagano. This is your employee. This is the person that you hired. He treated you like children. He treated you in an old adage attitude, and you shouldn't deserve it. Never in my career, working with Albarisi Clayco, Wright Construction, or sub-primary contractors such as KB, have I ever in my life witnessed someone talk to the owner. You wouldn't take that type of attitude if you went into any of the restaurants around here. You wouldn't take that from any of these fine officers who are your employees. Yet you sat there last week and you took it respectfully, and I'm just appalled. As a contractor who deals with construction, I'm embarrassed. As a contractor who deals with construction, I'm embarrassed because that gentleman there represents our industry, no different than the police officers industry, the operators' industry, the postal industry. You don't like when people say things negative, and that man treated you unfairly. I just wanted to tell you that I commend you for what you did last week and how you handled it, and I wish it didn't have to happen, but it's appalling. As a resident, you shouldn't have to take that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road, Florissant. This evening, I'd like to speak on several topics, one of which was earlier presented by the mayor, in terms of the budget. I hope that this year the budget is presented in a factual, without deception, and full disclosure given to the city council to make adequate and decisions based on reality, not fabrication. You are elected officials, and therefore you represent the citizens, not the administration. Another topic, sensitive, Mr. Caputa addressed it at the last council meeting, and I'm shocked and appalled, as well as what Mark said, in terms of what took place in our city of Florissant by this administration, and specifically Schneider, Tom Schneider. The post-dispatch and the reading of that article was not only shocking but disappointing towards one of the employees of this city and in terms of the issue that was concerning a private matter. I have asked, and I've talked about it, this evening, I had a meeting prior to this meeting, and sitting in a roundtable, the discussion tables what is happening in Florissant. I sat there and tried to understand the question, but at this point, all I did was say, "What would you think?", and the comments were very negative. I am just at this point here, and I've spoken many times, over and over again, about this administration and about what's happening to my city. At the meeting of the town hall meeting, and I call it the dog and pony show, I had my dog, I think a pony was there too. No one was, nothing was discussed about the Weber Building, not a thing. At my ward meeting, that was very well done, but once again, not one mention of the Weber Building. At the work session, the discussion about the Weber Building was very enlightening, disappointing. I commend the city council on taking a step forward to remedy the situation. I believe it was Mr. Jones and Mr. Lee who said, "It's like a Band-Aid. We gotta tear it off. It's gonna hurt, but we gotta get it done." I think that's a reality. We're in a position where we have really no choice. I know it's gonna cost more money. I hope in the long run that the building will be used adequately and fitting our needs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engelmeier, I'm gonna address the not talking about the Weber Building at our ward meeting, the reason we didn't, we did not have the update.
Okay.
So I did not know in order to give any information, so.
Well, I appreciate that.
Otherwise, I would have gladly talked about it, but I didn't have the information until the next.
And that's one of the things I asked about, you know, June 12th, on line thirty-five, thirty-six of those minutes, the lack of transparency about the Weber Building, and yet there is no public discussion or even item on your agenda. That's in the minutes of your meetings. I spoke about that on June 12th.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications. Clerk, please read the communications.
Letter dated September thirteenth, 2017, from Mayor James Honavich, from Calverden Park, thanking the police department for their assistance to the Calverden Park Police in apprehending a violent offender. I cannot read this evening at all.
Yeah, totally. I'm right with you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have public hearing number seventeen oh seven oh two three.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of Florissant City Code, a zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city council of city Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at nine fifty-five through St. Francois on Monday, September twenty-fifth, 2017, at seven thirty PM on the following proposition: To issue an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number eighty-one oh five to allow for retail establishment, Dollar General, for the property located at one five two seven five New Hall's Ferry Road. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone in special need should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling eight three nine seven six three zero, TDD, eight three nine five one four two.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bob Sissel, owner of Sissel Miller Companies, also managing member of DG Partners Development. We are a preferred developer for Dollar General, and we are proposing a build-to-suit for them. I know you're familiar with the property in question on New Hall's Ferry, and we are proposing to take the middle parcel, and it will facilitate the utilities and the entrances needed so the owner of the property can develop on both sides of us. So we are, this is the updated rendering. We've made a lot of changes per the P and Z and different requirements, such as a concrete approach, and we're actually, we're doing mostly concrete on the property, upgraded materials, and like I said, improvements to the property. The materials that we are proposing now, as you know, most of the Dollar General buildings are ribbed, paneled with block. Well, this, because of the P and Z's requirements, we have updated to the whole front of brick veneer, wrapping both sides partially up, and then the metal panels instead of the ribbed metal panels. These are consistent with an ephesus, but it's much stronger material, and it's not ribbed, it's somewhat smooth, but it's, you know, we can have different colors on it above the brick veneer. There was a couple other questions about a fence abutting the neighboring property owner. We answered that in that we, there's several utilities going in that area, there are setbacks, and we are proposing that we go ahead and develop ours, and then they put in the fence when they develop the property next to us. We are not abutting residential in any way, our property. So we are just purchasing the middle property and replating it. And any other, or any questions?
Mr. Caputa?
Yes, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I know you went planning zoning first time.
Yes.
And you showed them your regular building that you built.
That is correct.
With the regular tin and.
Yes.
I know this is a little bit of an upgrade, correct?
It's a lot of an upgrade for us, yes.
All right, now, what is your, why wouldn't Dollar General want to build a masonry like our ordinance states?
Dollar General will only pay a certain amount in rent, is what it gets to, and we have already spent upgrades of over eighty thousand dollars to meet what we felt was an upgraded building for this area.
But with the city ordinance requires a masonry building, correct?
That is correct, and it also, I mean, we know of other buildings that have been approved in the past with less than a hundred percent, and that is what we're proposing.
Now, at one time, on nine five, you said the petitioner responded that Dollar General does not use full brick on any of their buildings. Is that true? That's what it states in the minutes.
No.
At the planning and zoning.
Nine five? It was either, it was either misspoke, but, I mean, they have buildings all over the country. Most of them are ribbed panel, no brick, which was stated. But in certain areas.
Were they required to have masonry?
No, not, not, not necessarily. It's certain municipalities and certain areas, the different size building requirements that change, the seventy-five hundred square footer instead of the ninety-one hundred is all masonry, and this, they're proposing a larger building here because of the expected sales and the products they want for the neighborhood.
But I know on the bottom, you're gonna put brick veneer, correct?
It's, yes. Does anybody want to feel, I mean, it's, it's not structural brick, it's brick veneer.
Correct.
Yes.
It's cosmetic.
That's correct.
Well, I, I'm gonna have to stick with our ordinance. I mean, we, we have a masonry ordinance, you know, for a reason, you know, for case of a disaster, I mean, these buildings have come down like dominos, and our brick building, the masonry building, still be standing, so it helps our infrastructure of our city. And for me personally, I would rather see the, a masonry building go up. I mean, our last Dollar, Dollar Tree, or whatever it was, we require them to build with masonry too. So that's, that's my thought. I am only one vote.
Right. I understand.
But I, I am sticking to it, with the masonry construction of the building.
Even though less than a hundred percent has been approved?
I don't know if it hasn't been approved on my watch, put it that way.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Sissel, I, and I mean no disrespect in this, two times you said, "Not in this area," or "Not far this area," but other places you must have already full brick, correct?
Other states, other, yes.
In other municipalities, maybe in Missouri?
Depending on estimated sales, yes.
Okay. What makes this area not so good?
I, it's all about expected sales. I do not do that.
If you don't feel you're going to make some money in here, why would you want to come here?
No, they're, they're.
I don't understand what you're not.
They want to come here. They've approved the site. They, we can only spend so much on a product, just like any other building. We own Woodland Plaza in the city of Florissant, and we've spent a fortune upgrading that over the years and taking care of that property. But certain buildings, you know, we're not talking about a nasty building. I think, I think this, these upgrades are nice when you're talking about brick veneer and textured panels. It's, it wouldn't be any different than ephesus and block and brick used.
Right, but our masonry code calls far, far the brick, and I'm just saying, I just, I guess I felt, as a citizen of this, you saying it twice, and I did even ask clarification from the clerk if she heard what I heard, but I feel like if you were in West County, you might have to build a nice all-brick building.
No, ma'am.
Not here, or depending on what municipality. I'm sorry, I just, I guess I took a sense to what was said.
Well, I apologize for that.
I will re-listen to it. Mr. Parsons?
Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on and off.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Sissel, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I understand, I guess, some of the complications that you feel like you have financially, but it would have to be something pretty significant and pretty compelling for me to try to go against our city's ordinance, so I'm, that's really what you're here for. And up to this point, I've just heard you say it would be a significant cost. You haven't really given us any numbers or, you know, anything like that.
Yes, over eighty thousand dollars, yes.
No, I mean, for you, for it to be complete masonry. I understand how much it would cost for.
For these upgrades, yes.
Yeah. But what would it cost if, if everything was done according to our city's code? Do you have any idea on what that would be or not?
I mean, it'd be another, we did the front and the panels, so it'd be another, probably another seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars.
Okay. And there is a limit on what Dollar General will give you? Does that exceed that limit?
They, they pay rent. We're the preferred developer, so, I mean, we, we build for them under certain requirements, yes. And all of the other areas that we have developed, all the other cities in Missouri, Illinois, Indiana, and Iowa where we developed, we have never built a hundred percent masonry. We have never been required to because of any upgrades that we have. Most of them, obviously, with a national tenant like that, are happy with their standard, you know, prototype. But we have agreed to upgrade these to make it, you know, to try to fit in. I mean, the back of this property fronts floodplain and undeveloped property. So, I mean, no one is ever gonna see this, the back of it. So I, and we're even upgrading the back with textured panels. We didn't try to go from the ribs. We're trying to upgrade this building to make it work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sissel.
Mr. Cyan?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna ask, as you might be aware, there's already a Dollar General in Florissant located right around the corner from there on North Highway sixty-seven. And I was gonna ask if it's been anticipated, how it would affect the business that that store is doing, if there would be any impact to it at all, or if that's been thought of?
They, they definitely take that into consideration. Actually, we're looking at another one further down New Hall's Ferry for another additional location, so obviously, they like Florissant.
Mr. Lee?
What's the square footage of the proposed building?
Should be ninety, should be ninety-one hundred is the prototype.
Okay, and you had said that that's bigger than the standard that normally.
The seventy-five hundred, that's full brick, yes.
Okay, so the, and I understand you're the developer, so the tenant or the, that you're building for, they want to build a bigger store there because obviously they feel like there's gonna be more sales there.
That is correct. There's more product that they can offer.
More product, more, okay. And, and I just, you answered another question for me, so you're looking at for eighty thousand dollars more, this ninety-one hundred square foot building would meet all of our, all of our codes and be a hundred percent masonry?
I'm sorry?
You're making a proposal to the council tonight.
Yes.
And you said, if I heard you correctly, it had cost an additional eighty thousand in order to comply with our current masonry ordinance?
That's correct. Over and above what we're already over.
Over and above the, okay, over the other eighty.
Yes.
Sure, so it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than your standard tin, tin store?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and what, because when we're talking about masonry, I don't consider that to be masonry, that you're gonna glue on the front there. So what percentage of the building is masonry? The proposed?
Well, we feel the brick veneer is, so.
I understand. Okay, so let's even count that.
So that's the front of the building.
Okay, so what percentage? Because I've been on the council for years, and we have approved things that aren't a hundred percent. But the, but what we approve, what I've been in support of that wasn't a hundred percent was like, we allowed some ephesus at the top, or we allowed so, so what percentage, if we're looking at the, at the four walls of that building, what percentage would, would be brick and masonry? Because I don't consider, what's that block you got in there too that, I could tell just by the.
It's textured panels.
I could tell by the weight of it.
Insulated textured panels.
It's ephesus, more or less, with.
Well, it's stronger than ephesus. Ephesus will, ephesus, you know, will have the punched holes or whatever over time. These are, these are hard metal panels. That's why I wanted to pass this around. If anybody wanted to feel this brick veneer or the textured panels, I mean, they're good products.
You can hand it to us here, the city attorney, and he'll hand it to us, and we can pass it. Are you finished, Mr. Lee?
No, I'm still wanting to, what percentage of your proposed building will be brick and I'll even count your, I'll even count your brick veneer.
Brick veneer only will be a hundred percent.
Okay? And the rest of, so what percentage is not a hundred percent masonry?
Well, it'd be sixty-five if there's thirty-five.
Okay, so sixty-five percent. I can tell you that I don't recall approving, when it says not, we allow not a hundred percent.
Yes.
I don't, I don't ever recall, since I've been on the council, approving one that was sixty-five percent.
Well, and I, I don't know. I just know it's, it's, the textured panels and the ephesus and the other materials have been approved.
I just also want to point out that I, where my ward is, recently, there was a, I just also wanna point out that I, where my ward is, recently, there was a, a similar store that was, that was built, and I got more phone calls about that than any, than I've ever gotten since I'm on the council, but it was, it was a hundred feet outside the city limits. And we had to tell, we had to tell our residents that we would never approve something like that. We made the Dollar Store, or Dollar Tree, that built at, at Lowe's, we required them to meet, to meet the standard, and, and, yeah. So this is styrofoam with a, with a metal, so that you can't poke, poke it like you-
Those are textured panels, yes.
I, I'm gonna have a very difficult time with this as well, because my residents expressed their unhappiness with-
Thank you.
With a similar store that was built, um, outside the city limits, so, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I'm for a full masonry, we can't keep cracking down, I mean, every time a developer comes up, we keep breaking our, our ordinance down, I mean, the, the next guy's gonna wanna do it even worse after you, and it just keeps going and going, so, thanks.
Mr. Egan?
Pass.
Mr. Caputa?
Yes, you said another eighty grand, right?
Yes, sir. These are estimates, I'm not a, I'm not the estimator, but-
Now, would this come from Dollar General saying it, or you're saying that from-
No, it's from our superintendents and estimators. Construction, yes, we're a general contractor.
So you're not really sure what that money's gonna, if it's gonna be a little bit more than eighty thousand?
My estimators would, they would have exact footage and price per square foot, and, and all of that.
I mean, Dollar General is a billion-dollar corporation, they can't throw out another eighty thousand dollars?
Not in this area.
Not in this area, okay. But no, I'm, I'm just saying, there's other buildings that you have on your website that are masonry, you know, I, I feel that if you build at them in other cities where you have masonry, it should be done here in Florissant.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, one last thing, I would encourage you to go back to wherever you have to go back to, and consider whether, they want the larger store because they anticipate these great sales, I would encourage them to consider meeting our, meeting our ordinance, eighty thousand over the life expectancy of the building seems fairly reasonable price to, to be able to do business in our city, so, I'd like, like you to take that back with you, so.
Now, are, are we talking about full masonry, structural?
Well, I can only speak for myself.
Because then the metal building totally changes, so then we're way over that.
Sixty-five percent, to me, is not partial, that's-
Well, I'm just looking for some direction, if that's the, if that's the case.
Well, and I'm only going by what you, and I understand you're just estimating, you estimated that these changes from planning and zoning will cost about eighty thousand, you anticipated about eighty thousand additional to go full brick or masonry.
And I just, I'm trying to be clear.
I understand.
If we go to structural brick, it totally changes the metal building. Instead of, so that one-sixty or one-fifty's totally out the window, so, just, uh, so I'm just, I'm saying is the brick veneer-
Just going by your numbers, that's all I'm going by, so.
Anyone else? No? Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paul Stock, I am the Chair of Planning and Zoning for the City of Florissant, and the only thing I will tell you is, in its current condition, planning and zoning could not support this building. So, uh, part of the problem that we had was, this commission, of course, can, means and, materials, you guys can do whatever you want. It doesn't necessarily have to be full masonry, there's a lot of things that can be done to lower the price of the building. But, how are you going to tell them that they can build a building differently than the Dollar Tree down the road, that we required to build full masonry? So, that was the sticking point for us, and that's why we could not support it.
Thank you, and thank you for being on the board for so long. Anyone else?
Phil, I'm Building Commissioner, I was looking at the plans earlier, the side walls are about eighty-two feet long, the back wall's about sixty-five feet long, the proposed brick wainscote is about three, or about four feet tall, and the, the wall height ranges from the back fourteen feet tall, to, uh, maybe a couple feet taller at the front, so maybe an average of ten to twelve feet tall, if you should be conservative and say twelve feet, times the two-hundred-and-twenty feet, you end up, uh, around twenty-six-hundred square foot of non-masonry area, just thought you might want that calculation. If I took an arbitrary brick veneer cost of maybe, uh, twenty dollars a square foot, I'd have to agree with Mr. Sissel, it's, uh, over fifty-three thousand.
Thank you. Saying no further comments, Mr. Hanky moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is old business, the first item under old business is second reading, we have bill number ninety-three oh eight. Councilman Childress moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Cyan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize amendment to special permit, number thirty-four seventy-two, to allow for an addition of UPS business for the property located at fifteen forty-five South New Florissant Road.
Councilman Childress moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to special permit, number thirty-four seventy-two, to allow for an addition of the UPS business for the property located at fifteen forty-five South New Florissant Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Saying none, clerk, please pull the council for a final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Cyan?
Bill number ninety-three oh eight passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three forty-seven. Bill number ninety-three oh nine, I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, but before we go into the vote, I would like Mr. Hessel to, to please give us an overview of this bill.
I, I will, Council President, members of the council, uh, this bill is to appropriate funds to cover the costs and expenses associated with the settlement of a class-action lawsuit. I will try to be brief, but as the council knows, it's a complicated and very frustrating situation, so I'll apologize in advance for the length of time that it takes to even give a brief explanation. And let me also preface my comments by noting that the events in Ferguson were followed by a very thorough review and a scrutiny of the municipal courts, and the costs charged or imposed by municipal courts. I will also note that the view of municipal courts has changed rather significantly in the last three to four years. Uh, I've been experienced with municipal courts, all the way back from nineteen-seventy-seven, when then Mayor Egan appointed me as a Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for the City of Florissant, and I've been very proud of the experience that I had in the Florissant Municipal Courts, and candidly, not so proud of the experience in other municipal courts in the last few years. But let me try to explain the issue in this case, it is clear that all costs imposed by municipal courts must be set by state statute. And since at least nineteen-sixty-five, the Florissant Municipal Court and many other municipal courts imposed a fee for the extra administrative costs incurred in the issuance of a warrant when a person fails to appear in court after having received notice on the citation of the court date, and after having received at least one letter, or frequently two letters, reminding the people of the court date. It is a surcharge for the administrative fees associated for the issuance of that warrant. In twenty-fourteen, latter part of twenty-fourteen, and into twenty-fifteen, in keeping with the scrutiny and review that all municipal courts were being faced, Judge Boyle in my office reviewed the court costs being imposed by the Florissant Municipal Courts, and in twenty-fifteen, it was agreed that all of the costs were clearly authorized by state statute, with the exception of the fee for the issuance of the warrant. Again, that is a surcharge, rather than a direct charge, there is a state statute that addresses administrative charges. After looking at it carefully, the court did stop collecting the fees in twenty-fifteen, because there was no specific statutory authority. Again, an argument can be made, and has been made, has been made, that it's a valid administrative fee, um, but there are certainly risks associated with that position. Recently, you received an email, in which a citizen noted, um, that the state auditor, as they performed their audits, never questioned the legality of the fee, I'm not su, I'm sure the state auditor would tell us that that's not within her, now his purview, um, and I wish that that was determinative of the issue, but unfortunately, it was not. In twenty-sixteen, a lawsuit was filed challenging a number of fees, those fees that they allege were improperly assessed, were a warrant recall fee, which we've never imposed, a letter fee, which we'd never imposed, a failure to appear fee, which we've never imposed, and then this warrant fee. Similar lawsuits were filed against the City of St. Louis, City of Jennings, City of Ferguson, Fenton, Normandy, Wellston, and Forestale, that I'm aware of, I certainly spent considerable time talking to the attorneys who defended, um, those cases. I will say that, with the exception of one instance, the City of Florissant was unique in that we didn't charge any of those other fees that were being challenged, the only fee that we charged that was being challenged was this fee for the issuance of a warrant, I'll, I'll characterize it differently, as a surcharge for the issuance of a warrant. And again, we could have, we could litigate that issue, but the exposure ranged from as high as two-point-one million dollars, more realistically, um, based upon my analysis, the exposure was in the range of one-point-four million dollars. As the council is well aware, I met with you on numerous occasions, we talked about the risks, we talked about the probability of success, we went back and forth, um, and ultimately, the city council was confronted with making a very difficult, but in my opinion, reasonable business decision, it's a tough pill to swallow, I recognize that when I talked to you about it, again, this fee goes back to nineteen-sixty-five. Certainly, an argument can be made that this was a reasonable surcharge, and I, and I wanna emphasize that this is not a situation of curing an injustice, as has been reported being done in other municipal courts. This is not an injustice, no one was tacking on fees, this fee, as I said before, was because people, either intentionally or unintentionally, ignored the court dates on at least two, if not three, separate occasions. So, the imposition of this fee, again, I can't emphasize enough, was not in any way trying to take advantage of anyone who was within the court process. At the end of the day, as this council is fully aware, the settlement amount that was reached is the, in the eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar range, when you compare that to the risk of at a minimum one-point-four million dollars, to as high as two-point-one million dollars, we can all do the math and come to a conclusion as to whether or not that's a reasonable business decision, and as the city attorney, I will certainly recognize that it was my recommendation, after analyzing the law, after gauging and having many conversations with the trial judge, um, that it was much better off for us to settle this case rather than litigate the case. I will also add that the City of Jennings didn't, took a different course of action, and the circuit court ruled against them. So, I, again, I mention that only because I, I think that ultimately, we made a very difficult, but a proper decision, um, and that's what this money is going to, for, I, I will also add, for everybody's edification, if you will, that another lawsuit was recently filed, challenging the court costs excluding warrant fees, and then I was able to verify right down to the penny, the court costs that the municipal court was charging, um, and that such costs were authorized by state statute, and the case was dismissed. I wish we could have achieved a similar result in this case, but we could not. That is a very long explanation of identifying that unfortunately, it is incumbent upon the city council to appropriate nine-hundred-thousand dollars, that's a lot of money towards a resolution of a very, as I said at the outset, frustrating situation, not brought on by any action of this city council, brought on by a decision made back in nineteen-sixty-five, and, and carried forward to date. So, um, I hope that that adequately explains where we are, I hope that, that I have accurately conveyed my frustration, as well as the frustration of the city council, and where we are, but I will again add, it was my recommendation, um, to enter into this settlement, and I firmly believe that the city council made the right decision in doing so.
I thank you very much for that explanation, Mr. Hanky.
Yeah, at this time, I would like to greatly thank you, Mr. Hessel, for your professional and reasoned guidance on this, that guided, guided us down what we needed to do with this, uh, it was your professional reasoned guidance that helped us make the right decision on this, you earned your money, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of nine-hundred-thousand dollars from the general revenue fund to account number forty-fifty, Professional Services, to cover expenses from a class-action agreement.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee, I never saw you like, come on, hold on, there you go.
Mr. Hessel, just one other matter for public clarification, we're appropriating nine-hundred-thousand dollars because that is the maximum that we could potentially have to pay with all fees and costs, but if, if the stipulation within the settlement agreement is not met, it could be significantly lower than that, and those funds would then remain, or go back to the general fund, correct?
Good point, Mr. Lee, and I apologize for not bringing that forward, the nine-hundred-thousand dollars is to cover the payments that will be made to class members, as well as the administrative costs in issuing the notices and issuing those payments. And as you correctly pointed out, if members of that class do not receive, because they have moved, or do not cash the check for whatever reason, those funds will be returned to the City of Florissant, and again, there's no promises or guarantees in any of this, but based upon the experience of some of the other municipalities, I am hopeful that the ultimate amount that we pay is significantly less than the eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, or the nine-hundred-thousand that we're appropriating, clearly, funds will go towards the administrative cost, so that, I'm rounding numbers, the eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand for its settlement, we hope will be significantly less.
And having to swallow hard, and I'm not editorializing here, but the, the attorneys for the class are getting all of their money.
They are.
And I won't ask you to comment above and beyond that.
I am biting my tongue.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, it's already been, we're waiting for you to read- No, it's already been, we're waiting for you to read it.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $900,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 4050, Professional Services, to cover the expenses from a class action agreement.
Thank you, I think that was the first. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
John Hinklemeyer, Paul Winkler, Graham Road.
Oh, hold on, I turned those off. Go ahead.
Yeah, in reference to this bill, 9309, I had a difficult time swallowing as well the amount. Did not know or understand what took place. Mr. Hassle, you did an excellent job of explanation, with the only exception of the state auditor. I was shocked to understand and to read. I thought it was a duty and responsibility of the state auditor to review court fines and procedures and adjustments to their citations in the court system. And I went through a hole. Fell in a hole. I wrote a letter to him, justifying my understanding, and the lack of response for that. And the follow-up, though, is that on the city's part, the allocation is justifiable. And as a private citizen, it hurts, but as I said earlier, take the Band-Aid off, get it done, get it over with. And the other follow-up question is that it's going towards professional fees, or professional services, rather than a separate line item. If that's more appropriate, as far as a separate line item, to indicate that within the budget, or in terms of professional fees, which I don't believe it is, I believe it's a judgment, and should be listed as a separate line item. Although it's a bill that's presented here at the end, I'm just following up in terms of the hearing from citizens, just for allocation purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Bill number 9309 passes and becomes ordinance number 8348. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. Yes, no? Okay. The next item on the agenda is request. Councilman Egan moves to approve a beer and wine liquor license for Happy Nails located at 360 North Highway 67. Seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call? I have lights, too.
Okay.
So, do you want to do lights first?
Lights first, and then roll call.
Mr. Egan?
I was just going to comment that I did meet the petitioner and her general manager, who are here in the audience, if anyone would have any questions or would be wishing to suspend the rules. I will tell you that I know that there are places all over St. Louis County, or not all over, but there are places a man can go and get a haircut and a beer. I've been into the nail salon up there. It's a, well, I've been told there's places you can get a haircut and a beer. I get my hair cut at home, and I can have all the beer I want. But anyway, they've done a really nice job up there, and I can understand where a lady, when they're getting their toes done, would want to have a glass of wine. The petitioner has assured me that they're going to limit this to no more than two glasses to a, to a single customer at a single time. And the time you could be there, I know there are people in the dyes that have been to have their toes done. I haven't. But I understand it could take up to two hours for some toes. So, you know, I think it's a good way to, I think it's a neat thing for people to be able to do, so I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Depending on how big the glass is. Mr. Childruth?
Thank you, Madam President. I am in support of this. On Saturday, I crossed the line and got a pedicure.
Wow! He missed it! We're so proud.
And I could have used a cold frosty Anheuser-Busch Verve product. It was a great experience, but it was in the, I'm in the doghouse here, it was in the city of Chesterfield.
Oh, Lord.
So, now I can partake in the libations in the city of Florissant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to pass up before I start?
I feel bad, Kate, I get him too.
There we go, I guess somebody would be on your side. There you go. All right. Roll call, please.
That's way too much information. Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
No.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Motion carried. License is approved.
They didn't make you turn in your Vanguard, did they?
No.
Did you pick a color?
No.
No?
It's good.
It is. Bills for first reading? We have bill number 9310.
Ordinance to rezone for Darren Tucker, the property located at 22 Flower Ridge Lane from our four single-family dwelling district to our six multiple-family dwelling district to allow for the construction of a duplex.
Bill number 9311?
Oh, I'm sorry. On this bill for first reading, on this change, as we discussed, at 22 Flower Ridge last time, and it was not put on the agenda for first reading last time, would it be proper for all of us to go ahead and do the reads tonight because it wasn't given the opportunity the first time?
Nope.
We didn't have the first reading tonight.
We did, because they're, of the planning and housing, correct?
If you're going to, please move for a second so we can talk.
Oh, okay, wait, she's just, the clerk's giving me, and along with Mr. Hassle.
You need to move for a second.
We would need to move for a second reading, or we could discuss this later, because there is no discussion. It was just read. And he knew, the petitioner knew last week, we were just reading it once. I told him. So unless you're going to move for a second.
Um, George, what do you think?
You want to just let it go? He knew.
Yeah, let's go ahead and set up for the next.
Okay.
My logic behind it was because we didn't.
Right, now.
I appreciate your courtesy.
Right, and he knew. Did you want to say something, Mr. Lee? Okay, let's go back to bill number 9311.
Ordinance to amend miscellaneous revenue account number 0340330 in the amount of $12,396, and appropriate $29,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of a total police vehicle.
Mr. Childruth moves for a second reading. Seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance to amend the miscellaneous revenue account number 0340330 in the amount of $12,396.50, and appropriate $29,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of a total police vehicle.
Councilman Childruth moves for a third reading. Seconded by myself. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Ordinance to amend the miscellaneous revenue account number 0340330 in the amount of $12,396.50, and appropriate $29,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of a total police vehicle.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Bill number 9311 passes and becomes ordinance number 8349. Bill number 9312?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,500 from account number 0150627000, gasoline golf course, to account number 015063000, golf course equipment and repairs for unanticipated equipment repairs for the golf course.
For a second.
Councilman Lee moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Childruth. Discussion, Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Just wanted to note that, for those, I think everybody knows, the golf course is currently without a mechanic, and we have several pieces of equipment are down. The committee met with Mr. Schmidt, and we are currently, we have a loaner piece of equipment that's out there, and they're loaning it to us, they're renting it to us for zero cost. And so, it's a modest transfer, $3,500. That's why I'd like to get three readings for it tonight. Committee unanimously voted to recommend that we can get it so they can get that piece of equipment repaired, so that's all.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,500 from account number 0150627000, gasoline golf course, to account number 015063000, golf course equipment repairs for unanticipated equipment repairs for the golf course.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Childruth. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Aye.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the, oh, do you want to read it? Okay, go ahead and read it.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $3,500 from account number 0150627000, gasoline golf course, to account number 015063000, golf course equipment repairs for unanticipated equipment repairs for the golf course.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Mr. Hinklemeyer?
Graham Road, Florissant. As you know, I often speak about the golf course and issues concerning that and costs. In this particular bill, 9312, and the explanation from Todd Schmidt, understanding that it is not an additional fund, but a transfer from another account, if I'm correct. And just a sidebar note, in terms of the police, the golf courses, they've done a fine job in meeting. I know that there's been issues, and I've openly candid about my issues, but in this case here, the explanation is justifiable and understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Childruth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Bill number 9312 passes and becomes ordinance number 8350. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Are you going to talk about your chili, Mr. Childruth? Like, are you going to give the name out? Did you, oh, I was waiting for you to, but it's okay. Okay, okay. Mr. Childruth?
Who's talking down there?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I will talk about them. The Fall Festival is October 8th. It's the 20th year, and yes, I am a participant in the Chili Cook-Off again, along with Mr. Parson, Ms. Vigano, Mr. Egan, the chief, and, are you in it, too? Sorry, my reconnaissance work failed, so. Mr. Hanky is also in it, and I look forward to this competition every year, and it's a very worthy cause. It's a great event. Please come out and support it, and support the Chili Cook-Off. I would like to congratulate Chris and Kathy Helfer for their 40 years in business. They're celebrating this week. They've been in Florissant for 27 years. Helfer's pastries in Delhi, they have all kinds of specials going on this week. Please stop by and see them. It's a good place, a very good place, located on Ward 5. The Knights of Columbus Annual Tootsie Roll Drive is this weekend at Dearburg Shop &amp; Save at Coke Park and both Handyman Stores. So, please be supportive if you're around those locations. And finally, thank you Greg Williams for coming to the aid of our police officer, Lytle. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on this side? Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, just one thing real quick. This Wednesday, Old Town Partners has the Wednesday Night Out. It's going to be at Hendel's on St. Dennis Street, just a few blocks from here. Hopefully, the weather's going to break, be a little bit cooler. And if I'm not mistaken, Tim, this is the last one, the Wednesday Nights Out, and it's a wonderful time. It's a real community event. Get your friends, get your neighbors, come out. Starts at 7:00 until 9:00, right on the street, in front of Hendel's Restaurant here. So, if you can make it, please do.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yep, I'd like to thank the six gentlemen that called me up today about 2:00. And I went and met with them about this year's budget. And they sat down and showed me some concern, and I reassured them that I work for them. And I learned a lot sitting with them gentlemen today, and I just want to reach out and say a big thank you to them. And also, I'd like to point out the teams down the street are always needing volunteers, some extra canned goods, and some extra change. That is our food pantry. Please take time and swing by. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much. Food Truck Night, October 13th at the Knights of Columbus. I hope there's Friday the 13th doesn't have anything special with it. I think Paul has 10 trucks lined up for this year, so it'll be a lot of fun. I think this is the last one of the year, it'll be a great evening. Race to the Shrine, October 21st kicks off from the Shrine at 4:00. RaceToTheShrine.com. And last but not least, Ward 3 Chili. That's all.
No name for that chili, but that's all right.
Shameless talk.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Few things, yes, this month, September's, is emergency preparation month. So, if you can go on to, St. Louis County's got a very good website for this. Shows you a lot of good information on how to get prepared for a disaster, natural, or, you know, man-made disaster, whatever. So, it's, go to stlewiscounty.com, Law and Public Safety, Emergency Management, and get prepared. That's their website. Very good information on there. Another thing, if you're a firearm owner, don't keep your firearms in your car. Make sure you lock them up, keep them secured in your house. So, that's something I harp on all the time. Some people take, adhere to it, some people don't. But make sure, if you're a firearm owner, keep them secured. Be a responsible firearm owner. Want to congratulate Neighborhood Watch Program. Last Thursday night, they had a very good turnout. Lot more people are, block captains are stepping up and becoming block captains. They had a very good turnout last week. So, want to congratulate the Neighborhood Watch Program and keep it up. And another thing, our Neighborhood Watch Program, I call them a director volunteer. Norm Carrington is going to step down in that position. I would like to commend Norm. He did a very good job while he was there, and broke down the crimes and everything in the city and did a very good job with it. So, I'd like to thank Norm for what he did for the city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I just want everybody, wards 1, 3, and 4, to watch your mailbox. We're going to be having a joint ward meeting on Wednesday, October 11th, at 7:00 at the JFK Community Center, and we tasked the city clerk to get the postcards printed and out in a really quick manner, but they will be out before the meeting. So, look forward to seeing you and hearing your questions and concerns at that meeting.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I was asked by Councilmember Egan to be the pace bike again for the Race to the Shrine, and I'm getting in shape so that I can try to keep up with the lead runner, who, I had two runners pass me last year, so I'm going to try to be in shape so I can at least stay ahead of the runners. But that was, there was two of them. I came in third. There's going to, Mr. Hanky mentioned the Wednesday Night Out this week. Prior to the Wednesday Night Out, down near the Shrine, across the street from Rosemary Davison, is the, kind of the second-in-command from our historic preservation folks, Gretchen Crank, passed away recently, and we're going to dedicate a plaque in the sidewalk for her Right near the bridge that goes over to the Shrine is where her plaque's going to be located.
Charles Street. And then, on October 6th, we're going to have KMOV, Channel 4's Great Day St. Louis, is going to be, welcome, is coming home to Florissant is the theme, and so, we'll be here on City Hall lawn that morning with, with Channel 4. And we do have the location now of the St. Louis version of the 21st Century Missouri Transportation Task Force. Last Wednesday, we were in Kirksville at Truman State, and on October 18th, the location in St. Louis will be at Merrimack Community College, starting at 1:00 PM in the afternoon. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll end it with sweet and spicy delight. Just so you know the name, the vote for. The next regular meeting of the city council will be on Monday, October 9th, that would be the day after the votes. And Councilman Childress moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion is carried, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Hey, I have to plug it, because.